Wants to offer some public comment. Can just either raise your hand through Zoom or raise your hand hand. So seeing none, I'll call for you Jim to give us our COVID-19 update, please.
Sure, I can start by saying two things. One, we had an hour and 45 minute long call with the Commissioner of Education today to give us an update on where things stand with regard to COVID and summer programming as well as the fall programming. And what I can tell you is, you know, about as much as I do, which is not much. So the initial, I'm going to just pull up my notes because I think it's, it'll help me, I wrote down my thoughts as he was talking about things. And and I did think, and Paul was on the call as well, so I just had him review. So, so here's the overview. Next week, there'll be draft guidance coming out of the Commissioner's office for summer programming. Then in about two weeks, there'll be draft guidance for a fall opening, which in essence, if you read between the lines, the Commissioner is certainly talking about a hybrid model. He is not looking at us opening the school doors in a traditional sense in the fall. And that, that is sort of what I took away from that piece of it. He intends to give a number of options within that, what schools could look like. But that being said, we are actively engaged in, in the task force. As you know, the reopening task force that I created. You know, we're looking at all options and looking at what other states are doing, looking at what other countries are doing, having good conversation. And next week, I'm going to be hosting three separate forums for the community, to engage the community in three different days, but also three different time periods. So to get, you know, how they're feeling and what their thoughts are with, with regard to a fall opening. And, you know, part of it is, as the Commissioner said today, how many, how many staff, how many children, how many families are going to be hesitant to send their kids back? And what does that look like in terms of, you have 30% of your families that say, we're not sending our kids back, kids back until there's a vaccine. Now, what do we do with remote learning? How do we approach that? There are many, many concerns here. At this point in time, they're not considering any changes to the 180 day or 990 hours or 900 hours spent upon your level. They're not considering any changes to that at this point in time. Probably the biggest thing that came out of this was he will be encouraging districts to start purchasing PPE as soon as possible. There'll be guidance as to what communities and school districts should be looking for in terms of the types of materials, whether it's masks or, you know, gowns or, you know, shields or whatever it might be. Thermal scanners, hand sanitizer, things of that nature. If you remember, I did, I mentioned it a couple of weeks ago, the CDC had put out their guidelines. And if we follow the CDC guidelines to a T, we're not opening for a couple of years. That's just the way it is. I mean, we're, any high risk, I mean, that's the scenario. The, a question was posed about athletics today. And the superintendent's association, as well as the Commissioner's office, has been in touch with the MIAA. There is hope that some sports, the natural social distancing sports could potentially have be able to be participated by, by students such as golf or cross country or something of that nature. But the sports like football and soccer or volleyball where you're touching and you're in close proximity, they don't know how they're going to be able to handle that. So that may look very different as well. One other suggestion was, you know, surveying students' families about transportation, what that looks like in the fall. If, if we're socially distancing on buses and you only have 15 students on a bus, how does that look in terms of the cost? And what I can tell you is there's really, there's no spigot of money flowing to us with, with all of these changes. And so part of his comment today, and Paul correct me if I'm wrong, but he said, well, if you look at a hybrid model, now you're reducing the potential half costs of not having all the kids being transported to school every day, so maybe that will work. So that's really the update, it's not pretty. It's not something that, our, our fear of superintendents is that come mid-July, we'll actually have the guidance and, you know, families need to know what to expect now. We need to get a gauge on what families are hoping for. And you know, there, there are so many components to this that it's just scary to think what the fall will be and what it will look like. So that's really what I took away from the past two weeks of COVID. So questions on that kind of stuff from the Commissioner or?
Not so much on the, on the Commissioner, but just curious as to what, if anything, we're doing in terms of protective measures for the limited staff that are in and out of buildings now and through the summer. You know, are we, I think social distancing is probably not that much of a challenge, given a few people in the buildings, but you know, are we worried about temperature checks or do we have people coming in and out of buildings for the purposes? And is that presenting any challenges?
I don't think it is presenting too many challenges. So when you walk into the buildings right now, I mean, you'll walk in and we've got these stanchions up at the doors and we're limiting, you know, what doors you can go in. So if like staff was in this week or last week cleaning out their, their rooms, you know, we knew we'd scheduled how many people could be at the same rate, you know, during the same time period. All the doors were open, so there's less touching. And, and the custodial staff knew exactly what rooms were being used, so they could sanitize those rooms. Everyone's wearing a mask when you go into, so I go into Barbara's office. You know, I'll, I'll bring my mask or she'll have hers on when, you know, even though we're far enough apart, you know, it's still something that, that we're starting to get in that habit ourselves. You'll see our custodial staff walking around with gloves, mask and disinfectant constantly with them. So we're, we're looking at, you know, from a town perspective and a school perspective, where, you know, the front offices where you come up to a counter, we're looking at putting the plexiglass up. You know, sort of go to any store, you'll see that there, that's what we're, that's what we're going to be doing as well. I mean, Joe has been taking care of the town hall first and those folks because we don't have anyone in the schools and don't anticipate anyone in the schools until the fall. But most of our staff, I would say, is still working remotely, Mark, for the most part. But I would say it's picked up a lot more, Barbara, wouldn't you? Probably in the past two weeks, at least our staffs.
Yeah, so each building secretaries come in Mondays, Monday mornings. And we have the custodians prep the areas and then sanitize them after they're done. Business office staff, for my staff, I had each of them pick one day that they would be coming in. We have tended to have two or three people in at a time, but our offices are spaced out. Everybody's wearing their mask. We have sanitizer right next to the coffee machine. I think everybody's being really good about what they need to do. And we have ordered disinfecting guns that the custodians wear as a backpack and they just spray. And those should be in within a week or two, so that'll make it even easier.
Yeah, so, so part of, you know, the conversation, Mark, is that the CARES Act fund money that was coming in through federal government, Paul just finalized the grant process to it. And we got about $160,000 and, you know, in talking, listening to the Commissioner today, he's totally focused on using those funds for PPE, looking to use those funds for technology. So if you have to do more remote learning, can you buy more Chromebooks so everybody has one? Potential professional development of staff, so they can, you know, be better at the remote learning. All of those things are being factored in. $160,000 is not much. I talked to Paul Carpenter yesterday and, you know, we probably need $300,000 to purchase enough Chromebooks to distribute for every kid to have one. But, you know, that's sort of just things we're looking at.
And, and Mark, just from the food service perspective, we are still in there, but remember, a lot of the things that everyone's doing now, we've done historically. Washing our hands, being really careful that way. And I think, as I, I think I've already filled you in on how we have teams that go in different weeks. So we're being extremely careful and, and a lot of it is second nature to them. So we're, we're doing okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, and we, today we eat 138 meals, 138 students, I should say. And we're all distributing once a week, the USDA farm-to-families food boxes. We're getting 56 of those a week that we can distribute as well. And we're doing that in coordination with the food pantry as well as the people that come. And that's working out really well. People are really, really happy about it.
That's excellent. Thank you, Lisa. So any other questions for Jim? Paul Kendall, you, you were lit up. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, so Jim, did they give any, you know, if, if they're leaning towards a hybrid model and they're talking about not having to bus kids, don't we enter into the same conversation of, well, say we do are able to open normally sometime in the year or the next year? We need viable bus companies, right? And certainly, we can't continue to pay, you know, a lot of money when we're not collecting any fees and things like that. And then also, how does that impact our ability for our fee-based salaries, you know, that, you know, that we're, we're not, we're not collecting fees? And so, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of uncertainty around those things. I mean, there's no magic ball, obviously, but did they give any indication on some of those questions?
They did not. They're deflecting a lot of this. And what I'm finding out is that they will have a really generalized plan and say, hey, local districts, you figure it out. And that's really frustrating to us. And, you know, Paul, I mean, we could, I'm just using this as an example and I don't buy into this, this philosophy. I think you and I are on the same page. You know, we certainly could reduce our bus costs by only focusing on the students that we are obligated by law to bus, right? And figure that out. But to me, that puts our at-risk students tremendously behind the eight ball. You know, I have to take this, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll be right back.
Just, just for everyone's sake, we've, we've talked about that in, in policy subcommittee meetings and and I speak for Kathy as well, we are all three very much in not, we felt strongly that getting to school, not having that be a worry of our kids was, was the ultimate worst important. So that's what Jim was talking about there. You know, we don't subscribe to the idea of, hey, that's only bus, our, the students were obligated. So we never entertained that, you were just using that as an example. But we've had that conversation when we were reviewing our bus policy, policies up committee.
Thank you, Paul. So are we able to do that FY21 budget without Jim? Or should we move to something else and see if he comes back? I guess it would be you, Barbara, that would have to do some explaining if, if he doesn't return.
You're on mute, Barbara.
I can give you the short version. I have the list of the four changes from the salad, from the budget you approved to the budget we're asking you to approve tonight.
Okay, if you want to move forward with that and then if Jim returns, he can fill us in on anything else he thinks we need to know?
Sure, so we've made four adjustments to next year's budget to reduce it by $700,000, which is what the town has asked us to do. We're reducing salaries by $422,271. That is COLA across the board for all employees. It is adding in $150,000 for some new positions that Jim has in his, he's going to want to put that up on the screen, I think.
Yeah, he's probably going to want to share the screen and, and put that document up.
Yeah.
So I can move forward and then when he comes back, we can circle back to this?
Okay, that's great.
Does that make that easier for you? Okay. So next up, we have the Assistant Superintendent's report. Hi, Paul.
Hi, Laurie. Jim mentioned the CARES Act. So I just submitted the application for that probably about an hour before school committee. And as he says, it's $160,000, $160,900 to be precise. And we should know in a week, week and a half if it's all set, might have to make a few adjustments. But as he said, the money doesn't go that far. We've allocated it towards meeting the unique needs of some of our learners, technology, improving our readiness and response to COVID-19 and supplies to clean and sanitize the school. So when you're talking about all those things, you're looking at a lot of money. Just as an example, today, when the Commissioner was speaking, he talked about as an example, maybe having one of those temperature check machines as kids are coming in and out of buildings to check temperatures. He goes, not the point ones, but the ones that you can walk through, almost like an airport style thing. And he says, those are running at about $6,000 or $7,000 a machine. So if you have five buildings and you're buying two per building to get kids in and out of buildings at a fast rate, you quickly consume your $160,000. So we'll see what happens in another couple of weeks, once we get some direction from the Commissioner. And the other thing that I started working on late last week and into this week is starting to put together a document with teachers and building principals to identify where the gaps are pre-K to 12 with all of our kids. I think receiving teachers need to know what wasn't covered this year. Although we have no idea what September's going to look like, it is important for that when a kid finishes second grade, that the incoming third grade teacher, based off of what we did pre-COVID-19 and with the power standards, what wasn't covered and what skills weren't covered. That at least give receiving teachers an entry point as to, from a class perspective, where the gaps were. We'll still have to assess each of the kids individually to see where they fall on that spectrum. But within another week or two, we should have a document that shows what wasn't covered. So receiving teachers have that information. And those were the two things I was going to highlight tonight. And that was perfect timing as Jim just walked in.
Wow, good. Thank you, Paul. We started the budget discussion a little bit, Jim, but we decided to wait for you so you could share your screen. I'm sure you want to share that document about the positions.
Yeah, and then I'll probably have Barbara go through it. I, I'm going to get another call in about five minutes.
Okay.
So I will apologize for this people for having to do this. Okay. Share my screen. Okay, can you see this now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just going to go through the first slide. So as you know, we were at the tri, tri board meeting recently, as well as in, in past meetings, I've talked about how we need to be looking at a $700,000 decrease from the budget that was approved back in March by the school committee. And what that looks like is obviously moving to a $34,075,363 line item. So tonight, what we need to do is have the school committee vote. So I wanted to share with you what that looks like. And I apologize if it's kind of a lot of colors here, but I wanted to show you on the left-hand side, which is the, this area here is with what we passed back in March. And then how it, how it plays out over here in today. So this was the final appropriated budget in, at the end of last year. And that's how we always have started to show the outlay of, of where we're looking at increases. So what you'll notice is taking into account some of these other, the same items, but now in blue. So an increase in salaries due to contractual obligations for all employees, including additional staff. So we, you know, we had originally asked for 10 staff and that's down, down here, $465,500. I'm still advocating for $150,000, so some staff to be in this, this number. But what I've done is I've taken out a 0% cost of living, a COLA, as you will, that, that we would have budgeted in for all employees. So this does include still steps and lanes of everyone who moves, whether it's teachers, ESPs, nurses, custodial staff, it's still included in there. So that would be our new contractual obligation. Tuition for special ed stays the same, transportation stays the same. Everything stays the same until you get down to two items. I'm going to skip to the bottom. We've had a couple of positions of, after the March 11th vote. We've had a couple of teachers say, you know, we're not coming back or we're retiring or we were going to fill the positions. Give an example, Terry Henry's position at the high school. You know, she, we would have, we advertised for that position. We received no applicants, so we've just decided, we're just not going to fill that position. So those savings from that $69,000 up to $130,000 are a couple of positions that we've just decided not to fill the full-time positions because people were leaving for various reasons. Retirement was one of them. Terry had already retired, so, but she was working part-time for us. And then, so what happens is because we've reduced through here, our, our COLA, et cetera, and, and reduced the amount of the expense here by another $60,000, we're able to reduce the actual school choice funds that we have to use, that we can now use in future years. Because we know the budget's going to be tight in FY22 as well. By doing this, we're able to at least have, you know, another $250,000 added back into school choice for future years, which I think is going to be critical. This does not, I want to be clear with the budget here, this does not include any layoffs. So this includes all staffing that we currently have in addition to some of the, you know, 3.5 new positions. So I want to be clear with that. This is, this is not a, a budget that is looking to cut staffing. And I know staff worries about that. Questions on this before I go to the next slide? And I apologize for my dog, too.
Jim, does this have the potential to change depending on what September looks like? Because I assume that those positions we're still talking about are some of the, you know, special education positions that may look different. Maybe, maybe they're still needed, I, I don't know. But does this have the potential to change again on what September looks like?
Yeah, good question, Paul. And, and the next slide, I'll, I'll show that too. But the answer is yes. I mean, it, it could potentially change based on the budget that comes out of, out of State House, right? We're not going to know, that again, was part of the Commissioner's talk today. We're not going to know that until probably mid to end of July at the earliest, it looks like. So we could, we could potentially be seeing a very different budget scenario then. So this is what we know now. This is what the town has asked us to, to, to meet that number. And the town is anticipating using $1.4 million out of the stabilization fund to help offset some of the other costs. So, yep, Kathy.
I just had a quick question, since I just thought the, the international tuition, again, that doesn't change. But is that, that's money we already had in an account?
Correct.
Not new international students.
No, no, we're not, we're not counting on any revenue next year. We're not having any international students next year. So we're using the funds this year that we, that we've collected and it's in, in the bank, right?
Yeah, thanks.
Yep. Next. So this is what you'll see, in, in blue are the positions that we're still looking, out of all the positions. We're, it should say 1.5 full-time here, because there was a 0.5 psychologist who's being, who's at the middle school. It's, he's 0.5 at the middle and 0.5 at the high school. But we want to make the, we still want to keep the, the, we want to move that middle school to full-time. So, but we still need to work at the, at the high school halftime to help with the testing, et cetera. All of these positions, if you notice, therapeutic, therapeutic, this 0.5 psychologist is detached to the social emotional room. So these are all very fundamentally needed positions to help, and what I wrote before is, let's just assume it's about $150,000 added into the, into the budget. Let's assume we just have five students of, of these three programs who are outplaced. The average cost this year is about $80,000, that's before any transportation. So, or $400,000. Yes, we can assume there's a circuit breaker reimbursement. I use 70%, but I'm telling you right now, in future years, it's going to be probably in the 50% range. I'm, I'm just being, you know, using a higher number just to show, you know, my point that we would still save about $94,000 by adding these positions. And it would be even more with, because of, you know, if we had less reimbursement from the circuit breaker. So, so, you know, again, it's not a tremendous change to the budget, with the exception of asking our employees to take the 0% COLA across the board, taking into account some more retirements and non-filled positions and relying a little bit less on, on the choice funds moving forward for this year, which will help us offset costs in the future. That's what we hope. You're muted, Paul. Still muted, there you go.
Yeah, I was using the R which is supposed to work, it only worked for about five seconds.
That's based far right.
Apologize. Does, and I know, I know you don't have a, you can't have a true answer for this, but looking at the special education and the budgets related to that, particularly with outplacements, does how September looks from what we can provide for services potentially change whether students may need to be outplaced? And, and, and I know that historically, once, once, once they're outplaced, it's very difficult to get them back in. And whether, you know, you see that as potentially something that's going to impact us, that, hey, a student that we may, if we were in school normally, be able to service them. You know, but with however September looks and not being able to do that sort of thing, does that change and have to be outplaced? And if that's the case, in this situation, is there any potential for revisiting that where normally we wouldn't be able to do that?
Revisiting the, the positions?
No, no, the, the outplacement. Because typically, we know that once, once.
I could defer that to Kathy. I think she'd better understand that process.
So I'm going to speak, it's okay for me to answer the question?
I want you to.
It's a great question. I think everyone on the school committee knows that the team process is what will direct decisions with regard to both the services and then where those services are located. In other words, whether there needs to be an out-of-district placement decision for a student. And that occurs on a yearly basis by regulation. And by regulation, the team always has to have a conversation about whether or not the services and supports the student receives is in the least restrictive environment, so the LRE. We currently have two students at an elementary level that we are watching very closely to see if they gain the skills that will allow them to return back to the district. And the support of therapeutic programs would certainly bolster that, that consideration. Because both students, in order to be successful, absolutely do need that therapeutic support. So I don't know if it would happen most directly, Paul, to your question of this school year, but it couldn't have. Uh, but it couldn't happen at all without these positions in any of the future years until they age into a program that's, you know, more supported with the psychology. You know, availability within the therapeutic classroom. Does that help you answer your question?
Yeah, I I my my question was more about, uh, and I can, it's kind of the same theme I I asked about on the last slide is depending on what September looks like for the 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 way we can supply services to students, right? And the potential impact that might have a student needing to be outplaced, whether it be residential or whatever, to someplace where they could get the services that, you know, based on whatever restrictions we have in in September and delivering services, we wouldn't be able to. Wondering if you have any feel for the risk there of students needing to be outplaced because of what we're limited to do in September, based on whatever the guy like guidelines we have?
There are always students who I have my eye on in terms of the intensity of their needs and whether or not our resources are going to be appropriate for the needs that they have. The hard part is predicting that behavior and that need as students both gain skills and or have experiences that might stress them even more. Um, the the COVID pandemic has certainly been stressful for many students. So there will be that need for assessing the mental health and the mental supports, the mental health supports that students will need come the fall. So quite honestly, again, looking at these two positions, they certainly, well, the psychologist positions um across the board in each of the buildings will add the ability for us to meet the mental health needs of students who this experience has been greatly difficult for them in how they have been able to uh bring forward their own resiliency. So I would, without knowing specifics, believe that the psychology uh support and the therapeutic support that that represents will allow us to keep students who have been stressed through this pandemic uh that we might not have been able to keep, had we not been able to bring these supports forward. I think I'm still sort of missing your point a little bit, Paul, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to give you information.
Yeah, no, no, no worries, I I'm probably not asking it right anyway, and and I don't know that there's a a real answer to be given right now, not with all the uncertainty going forward. It's more about, um, you know, these students that we can't bring them back into the building in September potentially. Um, and and whether that means that they're they're not gonna get the the services they needed, potentially need to be outplaced.
I, no, I I think i- if I'm interpreting that part of the question accurately, um, the, if the school is open for business, in other words, there is a uh process by which the school can move forward, any of the school buildings, the district, to move forward to open the buildings. Uh, the guidance that I've received, and Jim and Paul can correct me if they've received different guidance, is that, you know, we want kids back in our brick and mortar buildings and face to face with instructors. However, we are going to respect parents and family situations that might choose to have that not be the case. But that doesn't mean then you move to an out of district placement for a special education student. Because moving to an out of district placement still represents a brick and mortar experience. You have to then look at, well, what is it that would be most helpful for that particular situation, that student, that family? Is it that we would provide tutoring within their home, is it that we would provide remote opportunities? And then that's because you're taking into, you know, kind of account the specific needs of that student. But it won't be driven by, they don't want to come back into the building if we're open, and so where else can they get those services?
And Kathy, um, just let me know if I'm wrong about this, but, you know, we we spent a lot of time, obviously, you know, in our budget season trying to determine, you know, whether we could add positions and what the priorities were and and why we chose these particular positions over a very long list of of positions that we would, we would love to be able to add. But um, you know, this was for the purpose of improving those programs. So where we're at, and it sounds like we will still get some improvement with the addition of psychologists because we're going to have a mental health piece added on to whatever challenges we already had. But a- at the very least, we're in the same position to address whether or not somebody stays in or goes out as we were up until this moment. Because these are physicians we didn't have before. You know, we we were trying to move forward and and improve so on some things, but um, I think, is it fair to say that we're we might, we might be a little bit better off because we have the psychologist, but other than that, we're basically where we were um with our ability to keep people in district?
I think we are better, I I mean, I tend to always look at things very optimistically.
Yeah.
And from that perspective, I would say the addition of the psychologist actually does lend to allowing us a better capacity to keep the kids.
Yeah, I would think so, and that's why Jim's got it on the list, though.
Yeah, absolutely. I would also like to add, though, you, we have the, you know, the middle school special education uh teacher as well. And I think that that will also allow us that capacity as well. So I think while I would have preferred that we don't have this conversation about what if the list that I thought was all necessary.
Right.
Then select, um, the fact is that I think of those that we have selected, it will afford us that opportunity to um certainly meet what I think will be rising needs, meet the consistent, the needs that are consistently there right now. Support the programs that you folks have been able to stand behind so that we could build um for our younger students in terms of the therapeutic classrooms. Um, and because we've been so successful at keeping kids in district that have that mental health need, that's part of the reason why we need that extra time for the psychologists at the middle and high. Those two programs have existed the longest, and we've seen the benefit of those programs existing in terms of the fact that they're utilized fully and utilized well, and it's allowing students to stay in district.
Any other questions for Kathy? Excellent. So are we at, you Kathy Bates with the warrant approvals?
Uh, I don't have any warrant approvals tonight. Laura, you have it?
Gotta vote the budget.
Thank you.
So do we, do we want to move to minutes, though, because Jim was gonna move on to the second, there was another, that was the first part of what he was planning on. We want to see if we can.
Why don't we move, like, why don't we complete the rest of the agenda and give Jim a chance to return so we can make sure he's has said everything he wants?
Yeah, that sounds good. Yeah.
So we've got a few different sets of minutes, uh, we can start with May six. Anybody have anything for me?
Uh, I just heard one comment on May six, I I thought they looked good, um, I should call them up. I think it's on the third page, there's a heading called Class of Twenty Twenty Sinage. And it talks, it, I just thought we should may- maybe add um that the select board voted to allow or they, they voted to waive the bylaw and allow the signage on town property. I just thought it was like another detail that maybe we just add to it, but.
Everybody good with that?
May six.
Okay. So wanna move to accept those minutes as amended, May sixth, twenty twenty? Who's got the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, all right, you want to, sorry.
Paul?
Aye.
Aye for me, thank you. Uh, May thirteenth, twenty twenty?
Yeah, I didn't have, I didn't have any changes.
None from anybody else? Motion to accept those minutes, May thirteenth, twenty twenty?
Removed.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, Paul, Kendall?
Aye.
Mark Terry?
Aye.
Kathy Bates?
Aye.
Aye for me. And then, May eighteenth, twenty twenty? Uh, any changes there?
I didn't have any.
Anybody else?
Want to approve?
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor, Mark Terry?
Aye.
Paul Kendall?
Aye.
Kathy Bates?
Aye.
Laurie Toski, aye. And uh that's just minutes, and then do we have any gifts and donations? Barbara, would you know, yeah?
Read those.
Please.
So we have a ten thousand dollar donation from AEFI that's going to the robotics club at the high school. Math night at Warren, we have collected six hundred and forty eight dollars. Uh, the Sons of the Amer- American Region, um, there's a gift of five hundred dollars which they're gonna turn around and give out as a scholarship to one of our seniors. And then grab and go lunches, we have two amounts totaling three hundred and fifty dollars for total gifts and donations of eleven thousand four hundred ninety eight dollars.
Wow, that's great. Do we have a motion to accept those gifts and donations?
Removed.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, Paul Kendall?
Aye.
Kathy Bates?
Aye.
Mark Terry?
Aye.
Aye for me. And um, where's Rachel, member update? Rachel?
Hello.
Hello. How are you?
I'm all right, how are you guys?
Hanging in there.
We're all hanging in there.
Um, so obviously, I'm disappointed about not having our original plan for graduation. Um, that was upsetting, but it's okay. I'm excited for the parade, I know a lot of my teachers were saying that they were gonna be there. So that's kind of the closure we're looking for, and then I'm really hoping to for the best on August second. And then, other than that, tomorrow is my last day, which is.
Oh, my gosh. That's.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, Rachel.
You worked so hard and it didn't end up the way you planned, but.
I know, it's all right.
Well, it was great having you on our school committee this year, too, so.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, you are such a great contributor and loved having you, and you can come whenever you want. You know, you're done, you pop into Zoom and visit with us.
Definitely.
You'll get to see you in person this time for our goodbye, but hopefully when we do get back to normal, I hope you come in and visit us so we can give you a proper goodbye.
Definitely.
Yes. What else do we have? Anybody else want to share anything about what's going on, any members? I don't know if there's any news, Paul, on the building committee front?
There is, uh, I I share with you, uh, with you all, um, after our FAS meeting, um, that's the Facilities Assessment Subcommittee. That's a a subcommittee for the MSBA, not not us. That's a a meeting where the MSBA, um, you know, kind of picks apart the ad plan and and really gives us dives in deep and and gives a little, gives us feedback. And um, you know, I I'll have to say that kudos to uh Mike Kyra and and Jim because we only got positive feedback. And uh, our OPM and and designers, uh, you know, they they just haven't, haven't experienced a a meeting, I think, that went as smoothly as as ours did. So it was all very low in feedback, and uh, so that's a testament to the the work that the the team's done, so. Uh, that's, that's not a formal thing, that's, that's kind of, well, I guess it's formal meeting, but it's uh, it's their opportunity to provide feedback and ask questions. We're still waiting um the formal written feedback from our preliminary schematic report submission that was uh early this month. That moves forward, so.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else? You know, Mark and I have been moving forward with the uh negotiations with the AEA, and if, again, we're doing it by Zoom, just like everybody else. And that's what we've been up to.
Uh, so Laurie, I I will just update everyone quickly, the uh Washington DC, um, the non-refundable deposit, I received an email from Capital Tours today, they are going to carry that forward for next year.
Wow.
Yeah, um, so they just have to win the bid, because this is the last year of their contract, so we have to go out to bid again. So as long as they win, they will carry that ten thousand dollars over to next year.
That's excellent, that's great. I was wondering about that, Barbara, because I saw that Mara Healy was involved in, you know, some districts were suing their tour companies.
Yeah.
For the returns, and it seemed like the decision was that they, at least in those cases, were entitled to the returns, and I was wondering if that applied to us, but it sounds like they came forward with their own resolution.
They did.
So that's great. Jim, um, we didn't vote the budget yet, we finished talking about everything else, but we thought we'd wait to just see if you had any final words on um. We talked a little bit with Kathy about the positions and um how, what kind of shape that leaves us in for next year. But other than that, we wanted you to be able to share anything else you still wanted to share before we voted. And you're on mute.
Sorry about that, thank you for being patient with me tonight.
Of course.
I I I would say, um, no, there's nothing more to say, other than, you know, we we were able to get to the number the town has requested us to get to. Uh, I'm fearful that um, you know, as we look forward to FY twenty two, you know, we're going through a budget now that that we're still adding a couple of positions, but uh, depending upon how the economy changes, even over the next few months, you know, what is that gonna look like to to Mr. Kendall's point in the fall? And are we in a position to be nimble enough to absorb uh any of the unforeseen um lack of revenue? And I think by doing this and adding, putting some money back into the um school choice and not utilizing all of it, um, like we were going to, will will assist in that, so. So I do feel comfortable with the budget number, as is uh, as it is today, understanding that things could change tomorrow quickly with um the economy.
Yeah.
With that, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the, so called the amended budget as presented by the superintendent.
I'll second it.
All in favor, Mark Terry?
Aye.
Paul Kendall?
Aye.
Kathy Bates?
Aye.
Laurie Toski, aye. So that passes. And action items, just same, same as what we've been doing these last uh months, just moving forward with uh our our plans. And unless anybody has anything else, we, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Mark?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Paul?
Aye.
Me, yes, um, good night, everybody, thank you again for being here.
Thank you, Laurie.
Thanks, everybody, thank you. All right, good night.